...
Welcome everyone to the February meeting of Tarrant County College District. It's a very nice day in the neighborhood, as our chancellor would say. The first item on the agenda is for me to call it to order, which I've called this meeting to order. Is there any, are there any public comments? Do we have any? Do we know?
No.
No, sir. No public comments. And the first thing on our agenda is to have a presentation about student access and success in some administrative programs and projects on the Northwest Campus. And we're going to talk about the hotline. So, Madam Chancellor?
Thank you, Mr. President, and Board Members, and good evening to all of you in the audience and those in the streaming land. We are very pleased to, once again, be able to bring you an outstanding program presentation. Of course, if you listen to me, you will know that every program we have is outstanding. But tonight, we're going to hear from just one of our outstanding programs, and Dr. Evelyn LeBlanc, who is the very proud president of the Northwest Campus, is going to present the program. Dr. LeBlanc.
Did I turn that on? It is now. Okay. Mrs. Hadley, Mr. Greenhill, Board Members, it is a great privilege for me to introduce our Dean for Public Services and Social Behavioral Sciences Division, Dr. Eric Jackson, and Steve Keller, who is the coordinator for the Fire Service Training Center. They will be giving a presentation on one of our exceptional programs. We have several, as Mrs. Hadley has mentioned, and that will be on the Fire Service Training Center. I have to also mention that they brought a lot of support. We have the Vice President for Student Support Services, Dr. Joe Rody here, and the Vice President for Academics, Dr. Leanne Ellis, as well. You ready? Very good.
Dr. Morrison would like for those two Vice Presidents to stand up so she can see you.
And, and I had not seen Dr. Gary Goodwin, who is the Vice President for Continuing Education.
Stay standing for just a second, so everybody can see your beautiful faces.
Yeah. I have a great team, and here they are.
Dr. Rody to my right, Dr. Goodwin by the camera, and Dr. Ellis by the wall. So, they are all here to support Dr. Jackson and his team. Dr. Jackson?
Good evening, Mrs. Hadley, and esteemed Board Members. We'd like to take this opportunity to introduce you to our Fire Service Training Center. Many of you have had the opportunity to visit, and, as you well know, it is a very well programmed, and it's recognized throughout this region. And we have prepared a video, and we've also provided you our annual reports, so that you can take those with you and also be an advocate for our Fire Service Training Center. So, with that said, we'd like to begin the video.
Some of you just know, it's in your blood, it's in your heritage, it smoulders within your subconscious. The decision to become a firefighter is an act of selflessness. It displays courage and compassion, a desire to serve your community with pride and integrity. Tarrant County College Fire Service Training Center can help you achieve your dream.
Our goal is quite simple, and that's student success. We use a lot of avenues in order to reach that. One of them is handpicking instructors. Instructor's selection is based on their ability to teach, their experience, and their passion, do they really have a heart to reach others? We use those to build very, very successful programs. And our instructors are very, very successful, and our students are very, very successful.
Located on 23 acres of the Northwest Campus, this technologically advanced complex provides one of the most realistic and innovative facilities in the world. It features a live-fire disaster city, replicating elements found in every community, including landscaped residential streets, homes, businesses, an apartment hotel complex, warehouse, high-rise buildings, and, of course, a fire station. State-of-the-art classrooms and offices comprise the 48,000 square feet of the administrative building.
The skill sets that they're able to practice out there in real-life scenarios, they can't get anywhere else. So, it's been a huge benefit for us, for our ability to provide service to our community.
The facility definitely gave us a multitude of live-fire fighting experience and scenarios, which I'm sure I will come to face in my firefighting career.
We were able to provide a facility where they all come together, and they all learn in the same manner. And they take a lot of those lessons, and they're able to interface and work effectively out in the field.
The Basic Fire Academy is the core component of the FSTC, continually meeting maximum enrollments and sustaining a 100% pass rate, with the majority of students being hired within the first year of eligibility.
A lot of people have gone on and gotten jobs and gotten hired in fire service, and they're, you know, everyone's kind of doing what their dream was.
I've been instructor here for 15 years. It's seeing many of the students that I watched through the Basic Fire Academy that are now officers in their department. Also, to see those same individuals, a lot of times on news stories, actually using a lot of the skills that we taught them here in the classroom.
Having actual firefighters made the experience so much more exciting. It was more information and more knowledge than textbook could ever give.
Annual CE enrollments continue to exceed expectations, offering continuing education to certified firefighters and first-response agencies, with an option to customize training, providing courses such as Live Fire, Swift Water Rescue, Hazardous Materials, Vehicle and Machinery Rescue, Rope, Confined Space, and Trench Rescue.
We get our continuing education. We supplement what we do in-house, and we do specialized trainings.
I came here knowing nothing and left feeling very confident and competent that I could do my job.
Now that I am a firefighter, I do plan on returning to TCC to pursue my degree in fire science technology.
It just doesn't get any more rewarding to that, to know that you made a difference.
The TCC, FSTC, continues to draw attention both regionally and internationally, serving over 40 local fire departments, and reaching out internationally, providing comprehensive training to firefighters in Taiwan and Qatar.
One of the other great rewards from being an instructor with Tarrant County College Fire Service Training Center is always attending graduation. Many of the parents come up during the graduation and tell us the difference that we've made in their kid's life, and basically totally transform a kid.
I was very impressed with the graduation ceremony itself. They have awards, and they have an honor guard come with the flags and bagpipes, and all the instructors are dressed up in their, you know, Class A uniforms, and it was, just made you feel really special.
Tarrant County College has a reputation, not just locally, but nationally and internationally of being a leader in fire service training.
you with the knowledge and skills it takes to become a firefighter. We can help you achieve your dream.
For many of you may not have met our program coordinator of the Fire Service Training Center, Mr. Steve Keller. And he is, as well with the rest of the team, the brain behind this great video presentation. And I'd like to take this time while he's here to thank him in front of the board and in front of the participants here today. And Steve Keller, thank you for your great effort.
Would you like to have a word, Steve?
Well, I would. I would like to thank a few people because, of course, it was the entire staff at the Fire Service Training Center that contributed to this effort, and we're happy with what the result was. Our instructor, our associate Renee Curtis, had a great deal to do with coming up with some ideas, and every day she would just, like, "That's great, you know, let's do it." And she came up with the script. And then it got to where we had to do the video, and Chip Cogswell did a fantastic job coming out on a wind, saying, "Hey, okay, we got a good fire, come on out." And he found himself in a situation, oftentimes, like, "I'm sorry, bud, but I knew it was warm, but it was a good shot." And so, he took one for the TCC team. And then Gail Washington was our voiceover, and I call her now the voice of the Fire Service Training Center.
Is she our employee?
She is.
Is she here tonight?
No, ma'am, she is not here.
Will you tell her we said she did a wonderful job?
I will pass that along.
You know, I do want to say how this is just one of our premier programs, and how proud I am of the Fire Academy. Some of us here at the board were there when it opened, and we went out there and actually saw some rescues taking place. And it is just, it is a wonderful program, and very proud of it, and what we've been able to do for other communities in providing the training. So, yes, I still have my fireman's hat, but...
That's great, and I thank you for that, and we appreciate y'all's support of our program, because we know, we need to do what we do. It takes a lot of resources, and y'all've supported us, and we thank y'all for that. We do have a parting gift, if I could...
Sure. Absolutely. Absolutely.
...a jump drive with the video.
Oh, wonderful.
That's terrific.
Great, great. Thank you. Oh, that's extraordinary. Oh, look at that.
And you know, for those...
He loves these kind of gifts. My law firm would like that, and have a gamble or something. That would be great.
And you know, for those board members that haven't come out there, we really need to come out there and visit again. I think they'd be amazed. They'd be amazed.
Mr. President?
Mr. Greenhill?
May I say something?
Oh, sure, sure.
I would just like to comment. We have a very good 29-year-old friend who graduated from A&amp;M with a degree in construction management, and when the bottom fell down with new construction, he went to the academy. And he's just proud to be in the fire training service, and he has a job with Carrollton, and he just couldn't be more pleased. And it's just a great story, because he'll continue on with his EMS, and he's just thrilled. And the one thing that surprised him when he did his first fire, I guess it was a residence, the noise level. I mean, he was trained with it, but until he got up close and personal in a real-life thing, the noise level, he said, was magnified exponentially. So, anyway, but thank you for all that you do for those.
Well, I want to thank you, too, for such a wonderful presentation. And I have to tell you that this is coincidental, but while I was in Washington this week, Mr. Heda and I were there, you'll hear more about that in a minute, this person sitting next to me said hello, and I said hello, and I said, "I'm Irma Hadley from Tarrant County College." He said, "Oh, you're at that wonderful fire training center up there." And I said, "Yes, and where are you from?" He's from some community college in Pennsylvania. And he knew all about us, and he was singing your praises, and so everybody knows us. Everybody knows about the wonderful work that you're doing, and so it's very interesting. You might want to tell the board quickly, just a little bit, about what you're doing in Qatar, and what was the other?
Qatar and Taiwan.
Taiwan. Just tell them quickly what you're doing there.
As firefighting's becoming, recognized internationally, and cities are growing, and communities are growing, they're finding themselves wanting to have the same services we offer over here, and they're willing to spend the money to do that. So, they'll build these training centers much like ours, and in some cases, larger than ours. But it's like, once you build it, now what do I do with it? And so, they realize that since we have 10 years' experience in fire training with a field such as this, they're willing to come over and partner with us, and then we go over to their training center and give them what we've learned, lessons learned. And so, it's been a really neat partnership on both sides. And so, we'll go train them, and then they'll come over here and get exposed to our classroom and fire training here stateside. So, it's great to be a part of that, you know, it really is.
So, we're known throughout the world.
We are.
Absolutely. Well, thank you both, and thank you, Dr. LeBlanc, for such a wonderful presentation. Thank you.
Madam Chancellor, your next item on the agenda is to discuss our hotline, an update on the feasibility study for our hotline?
Yes, sir. Mr. Greenhill and Board Members, Annette McCurdy, who is our internal auditor, is going to come and give you an update. And before she starts her update, since she reports, she is a direct report to the board, and she and I work closely together, along with the other staff members, wouldn't normally do this, but she has a new employee that I want her to introduce to you, Board Members, tonight. So, you want to do that first, and then do your report?
Oh, sure.
Call her up.
I wasn't expecting to do that right now, but that's okay.
Well, that's okay. That's all right.
Veronica Motta is our new senior internal auditor. She has experience with D.R. Horton, some public accounting auditing education schools, and she also has some experience with some ACL data mining software with McKesson Corporation, doing some fraud analysis.
Tell us what ACL is.
Oh, I'm sorry. ACL is Audit Command Language, and it is a data mining software where you can, that helps you a lot, I know.
Yes, it does.
It allows you to look at an entire population rather than just a sample. So, you get a lot more information and a lot more coverage quicker. And it was one of the things I listed as a plus to have. So, basically, she had all the skills that I desired, plus all the would-be helpful if you had. She was a perfect fit. The committee agreed that personality, she was a perfect fit, and she comes to us now. So, Veronica Motta.
Veronica, come to the microphone and say hello. She didn't want to do this, and I told her she had to.
We weren't expecting this, so...
Good evening. I'm really excited to be here, and I hope that I can apply some of my prior knowledge and experiences to help better serve Tarrant County Community College.
Thank you. Very good. Well, we look forward to having you work with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And she's quick on her feet, because she was not expecting that tonight. Okay. Mrs. Hadley, Mr. Greenhill, members of the board, as Mr. Greenhill mentioned earlier, tonight I'd like to spend some time giving you some update on the research we've performed on the implementation of a hotline here at Tarrant County College. First, a little background on the increase of hotlines over the past few years. After several high-profile companies failed due to accounting and corporate scandals, Congress enacted the Sarbanes-Oxley Reform Act, most commonly referred to as SOX. This act imposed many new requirements on public companies to enhance their financial responsibility and accountability. One of the requirements states that public companies must have some sort of confidential complaint mechanism. And although institutions of higher education are not required to comply with SOX, the National Association of College and University Business Offices, NACUBO, believes it is a best practice to use SOX as a guide to enhance our own accountability. As such, NACUBO recommends a confidential complaint mechanism as a good practice for institutions of higher education. And it goes on to give examples such as a hotline, anonymous voicemail, or email. Tonight, I want to speak to this recommendation as it relates to TCC. Starting with, do we have the authority to implement such a mechanism? And according to our policy AF, we do. The purpose of a hotline at TCC would be to encourage the reporting of violations of laws and regulations, violations of TCC's policies, professional standards, and our code of ethics. It would also be used to encourage the reporting of occupational fraud, waste, and abuse. Now, fraud in this context is not the strict legal definition of fraud, but rather it is defined as the use of one's occupation for personal enrichment through the deliberate misuse or misappropriation of resources or assets. Some examples of these types of things include theft, conflict of interest, or the falsifying of records or reports. Occupational fraud can be as simple as the pilferage of college office supplies, or the manipulation of time cards, or it can be as complex as sophisticated financial statement fraud. All those words I just used are pretty emotionally charged, but the hotline could also be used to receive process improvement tips or suggestions. Using the hotline in such a way could save the college costs, it could also foster good stewardship and boost employee morale, and it'd also help the hotline overcome some of the negative stereotypes. What the hotline is not intended to be used for is issues addressed by existing policies and procedures, such as student complaints and grievances, employee complaints and grievances, and issues related to discrimination, harassment, or retaliation. Coming back to our discussion on occupational fraud, studies have consistently shown that tips have been the most common means of fraud detection, and that the most common source of tips is from employees. The same studies show that organizations with hotlines receive more tips. And perhaps most importantly, the studies indicate that organizations with hotlines incur much smaller losses than those without hotlines, and that they tend to find fraud months earlier than their counterparts. But some hotlines are more successful than others. During my research, recurring themes for successful hotlines included not only giving people a means to make a report, but also publishing, publicizing the hotline and encouraging people to report concerns or misconduct. They also give submitters choices and convenience in making reports, and will allow the submitter to remain anonymous if they so desire. Once the reporter takes the initial step, successful hotlines focus on obtaining a full set of facts from them, and then putting the information into the hands of people who can and will act on it in an appropriate manner. The people investigating the reports are guided by a systematic case review and resolution process with built-in checks and balances. And finally, they also include appropriate documentation of the entire process from intake to resolution and subsequent reporting. Based on research targeted on the use of hotlines in higher education, the recommended attributes of TCC include that the hotline should be marketed and made available to employees, because we know that three times as many occupational fraud instances are uncovered by tips as by any other method, and that employees are the most common source of tips. Furthermore, research shows that employees are more likely to make a report if they can remain anonymous, so the hotline should have the option of remaining anonymous. In higher education, 80% of reporters choose to remain anonymous, whereas the split is more like 50-50 in mainstream corporate world. In addition, the reporter could have, would have a choice of calling a 1-800 phone number and speaking to a call center, or completing an online report. In higher education, 70, 80% of reports are made online versus by phone when given a choice. Both methods of reporting would be made available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, because 50% of hotline reports are made outside normal business hours. And finally, hotlines serviced by a third-party company are more successful for several reasons, and I will talk about those in the next few minutes. So, how would the hotline work? For phone intake, the reporter calls a toll-free number and connects directly to the third-party company. The contact call center is staffed by live personnel dedicated solely to the intake of ethics and compliance hotlines, and the information is recorded to a case management system. The caller is then assigned a unique report key and password that enables them to check back on the status of the report, and it also allows the person working on the report to pose clarifying questions to the caller. The ability to have two-way dialogue between the reporter and the caseworker allows for greater success in researching and addressing the issues. For web intake, the hotline is actually a portal page on the third-party server. This page may be accessed directly at the server's website or via a link from TCCs. The page is customized with our branding and information, as well as links to our policies and procedures, and it also will have, like, frequently asked questions and the like. But it clearly states that the webpage is hosted by the third-party and is not part of the college's website or intranet. This is important because they know that it truly is anonymous if that's what they want. And once the reporter completes and submits the online form, it is automatically recorded into a case management system. And just like for phone intake, the process allows for two-way dialogue between the person submitting the report and the person assigned to work the case. As just mentioned, for both phone and web intake, the information is recorded in a case management system. The system is supported by the third-party company, but the data belongs to the college and is accessible by selected personnel. The reports are categorized by the type of incident reported, and based on the type, an email message is routed to predetermined college personnel informing them that a case has been assigned to them. The assigned caseworker signs on to the system and will access the report there. The personnel receiving the assignments will have procedures in place to investigate the incidents and to involve the appropriate parties. The work performed and recommended action or resolution is also summarized in the system as well. I've talked a lot about the case management system, and I'd like to take a moment to comment on the benefits it provides. Not only does it facilitate the collection of information, but it also provides consistency and proper documentation through the process of researching and ultimately resolving issues, as well as gives us insight through reporting tools and analytics, and helps us mitigate risk and ensure transparency. us mitigate risk and ensure transparency. In addition, it allows us to benchmark against others in higher education. The college could certainly benefit from a hotline. It would enhance our accountability and send a message to all our stakeholders, as well as to our employees. It would allow the college to find and address issues sooner, and therefore reduce losses from theft and litigation, as well as potential damage to our reputation. The use of a third-party vendor for the hotline is preferred because it will allow for anonymous reporting while enabling two-way dialogue. It provides a case management system with the benefits of it just discussed, and the service is very cost-effective when compared to providing the same level of service and controls for an internal hotline. Now, I'd like, if you have questions or thoughts, concerns, you can address those now. Ms. Winnett?
Yes. What have we done up until now to track this or to deal with these types of issues?
Typically, well, it would be like employee complaints or police. We have a hotline for the police themselves, but it would go to, it'd be escalated up and then to legal, and I don't know if legal wants to comment on that or not, but for, obviously, you will? Okay. I'll defer to our legal counsel.
Ms. Winnett, this actually fills a gap that we've had in the policy. There actually is no policy in place unless a particular person has suffered a harm, like under a whistleblower statute. They have to let you harm. So this fills the gap where maybe somebody didn't have something personally happen to them, but they observed something.
Right. You know, I understand the need for something like this, but I guess my question is, it involves staff, it involves contracting a third party to oversee the data that's being collected. This is a feasibility study. Have we any idea what the usage would be? I mean, and the cost?
It is estimated you'll have 1% to 2% for every full-time employee, so we would get anywhere from 10 to 20, 10 to 20 reports a year is what is expected. The cost would be $5,000 on an annual basis and an additional $2,000 for the first year. I did also talk to other colleges. The universities, because they are state agencies, they are actually required to have some kind of mechanism like this because of an executive order from Rick Perry dealing with fraud, waste, and abuse. So all the large universities have something, and most often it's with a third party. When I looked at the top 10 community colleges, two already have them, and they're extremely happy with them. That would be Alamo Community College, and they get like 30 to 40 reports a year. Now, theirs are open to students, but they do get, they say that the hotline more than pays for itself with what they find. And then San Jacinto, no, South Texas College is smaller and gets fewer calls, but again, they're very happy, and they limited it to just fraud, waste, and abuse. Houston's kind of at the same stage as we are. Dallas has an internal one. They get calls, but nothing ever really comes of it. And then the final one would be, San Jacinto has one that goes directly to internal audit. It's not anonymous. They get zero calls a year. So, I mean, all this, I mean, and it was recurring themes over and over again, you know, so I just tried to summarize it there.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments?
I'd like, go ahead, Dr. Morris.
I was simply going to ask the proposed timeline for implementation.
The vendors tell me that from the point we sign the contract to when we roll it out, basically, we need to do it like within six weeks, but we want to wait to sign that contract until we're ready. One of the things we need to make sure that we have lined up so it can work correctly is to go ahead and get our verbiage for the portal page, and the portal page would basically have a message from the tone at the top, and then, you know, design it all so that we can roll quicker. But they said the delay is not usually on their side, it's usually on the side of the college. And so it could go within two months from the, from, within six months of the time we signed the contract. We have not signed the contract yet.
The, the Calt members discussed this proposal at length, and I think we are all very comfortable with it. The faculty, the JCC also had a pretty good discussion on it. So it's made the rounds within the college. I think all of us are very pleased that we have a mechanism that will allow people to report things that they think, or fraud, or abuse, or whatever. We understand that many of the reports we get will probably be because of a misunderstanding. People, you know, sometimes will see something and think it's one thing, and when you investigate it, it really is something else. But in the spirit of transparency, we think it's a good thing for the college. So we're glad to have it installed.
The Audit and Finance Committee were also briefed at our recent meeting, and I thought of a question after the meeting. Who trains our people to accept and work the calls?
The company will help us with that, give us guidelines and the like, and of course, every call goes to two people at TCC, and it's not like you just go out and start doing things. You stop and think and talk about it with someone else before you go and do anything. But the company has a workbook and guidelines and that type of thing, and we, of course, will not do anything that we're not confident of doing. We won't roll it out until we feel like we have the right procedures in place to address these things.
Any other questions or comments?
I would like to know what action is required on behalf of the board to put this in motion.
There's no action at this time, but legal has told me that there will be changes in policy to reflect the hotline, and so you will need to approve the policy in a future board meeting. So, and of course, we won't roll it out until that policy is approved. Or sign the contract for that matter, until the policy is approved.
Okay. Thank you. Good questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Annette. Our next item on our agenda is to approve the minutes of January the 19th. I believe that we have no corrections this time, and that we're in a position to approve the minutes. Do I hear a motion to that effect? So moved by Conrad Heed. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. We will now have a very lengthy consent agenda. It's listed A through, looks like it's A through M. Does anybody have a desire to take anything off?
Mr. President, I'd like to take item F off of the consent of agenda.
Okay. Item F is the?
Intake digital signs.
Intake digital signs?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Except for, let's see, what's the procedure except for item F? Do we want to, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? There's a second. There's a tie, but I'm sure that that could be resolved. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. I think we have, we probably have removed item F, or do I need, item F has been removed, so now we would like to hear from.
I'm just curious about it, Mr. President. It's a $197,000 expenditure, which is roughly equivalent to tuition for 500 students in a semester for digital signs. I'm told that it's in the budget. I don't recollect a discussion or presentation about it. I'm told this has sort of been drifting around for the last 10 years. It seems to be, to me, to be a fairly superfluous purchase considering our needs, but I'm wondering if we could table it and perhaps have a further explanation of it at our next board meeting.
I think that's something we can do. Is there someone who's in charge? Oh, Nina Petty. Okay.
While she's coming to the microphone, let me tell the board that this is something that you may choose to, you may choose to not do. However, I don't think you'll want to make that decision. It's a matter of safety for our students, and, and we're pretty much, Chief Williams is not here to expound upon it along with Ms. Petty, but I'll let her talk about. I believe we said it was more like a five-year project. That was the projected payout, I believe.
I think it really came out of the last SACS accreditation in terms of, my understanding is the faculty group actually got together and made some recommendations around this. It really is about safety, emergency, being able to message, operate more as a district. Northwest has two signs, but currently the sign at Northeast is 15 years old, and there is no signage at South or Southeast. So again, this would bring us all together as a district when we have closures or emergency messages that we have to get out. They'd be placed at the entrances. And again, as your memo reads, it's around custom, customized information to get to the students. It's around any other messaging and operate more as a district. I hope that answers the question. And I know Margaret Lutton, my director on my team that was on the faculty side, she was in our faculty department for 15 years as department chair, she worked with the faculty group and was part of that, and is also my point person for SACS accreditation, and this is part of our master plan in the past and going forward. So I'd be certainly willing to get you any other information that she require for this if I haven't answered your questions.
Any visuals?
I don't have any visuals tonight, but certainly can.
They're probably, you know, giving him something to look at.
Sure. Be absolutely more than happy to do that.
One of the main driving forces behind this, of course, is the fact that our buildings are scattered, and it's just, you can have chaos. We had a situation on our Southeast campus last year, wasn't it, David? We thought there was something really bad going on. It was a gas, gas disruption or something, and we needed to evacuate the campus. The safety, public safety people, everybody was involved, and we needed to evacuate. And it just takes a long time to get the word around if you don't have some kind of system for doing that. So I, I think we can be held accountable, actually, if we don't take precautions to make sure that we have designed processes and systems that would ensure the safety of our, our students and the general public who may happen to be on our campus. So I'm not real sure this is something we have a lot of options on, really. Not just something we want to do, but I think it's something we need to do. We can table it if you'd like and continue to discuss it, but we've, this is just a continuation, right, Nina?
It is.
Of a long process that it was so expensive. We knew we couldn't do it all in one year, or two years, or three years, and so we're just close to the end of it, I think.
And I can also provide you, I think Ms. Lutton can get you the paragraph in SACS that addressed all this in the last accreditation, and I know we're going into a new one, so I think as you're saying, Chancellor, it's a, it's sort of more of a requirement.
So since we're discussing it, and I see that South, Northeast, and Southwest is listed, are there, is there a similar system in place already at the other two campuses?
Well, Northeast, yes. Northwest has two signs currently. So this is going to be addressing, replacing an existing sign at Northeast, and then actually giving signage to, am I wrong on that? Signage to South and Southeast, which currently have no signage right now at all. And Trinity River downtown has adequate signage, so.
Well, they have signs, but they don't have digital signs. Only Northeast has digital right now. Is that not right?
And this is exterior, so I'll have to, I'll have to look into that.
We're talking about at-the-curb signs, the monument signs that
Right.
Are, will be replaced, or will digital be placed on top of them?
I probably need to get back to you with the accurate information.
Is your sign really 15 years old already on the North side? But that was my question, too, is what, what happened to, you don't have a digital sign on Northwest, do you?
We have one approximately three years ago, and it lost for safety reasons.
But it's, it's interior.
No, no, it's out. Drive in.
Right. Yes.
So the Northwest has two digital marquee signs on the entrances coming in, and that's what we're trying to do, is get the same signage on the other three campuses similar to Northwest.
The word advertising concerns me. On Northeast, there's a Star Telegram marquee. Is that coming down? Are we contracting with any other?
I'd have to refer to our communications department to address what content will go on to the signs. That wouldn't be something I would.
There's, there's no discussion about any contracting with an outside entity on these. This would all be the internal cost. However.
Is there an opportunity for that? That's what I'm afraid of.
However, I, you know, Mark McClendon has been charged with the responsibility of, of finding some entrepreneurial ways to help us at Tarrant County College so that we can pay tuition and scholarships and other kinds of things, Mr. Carter. So this, you know, we might want to call it the ABC sign for Northeast campus. I'm just saying that. But at this point, we are not discussing any outside forces. Star Telegram may want to put their name back up there, I don't know, but there's been no discussion about that. Have that with you, Larry? Not at all. It's been a good advertisement for them, and it was good for us, I think. I know some of us didn't like it, you know, well, I say some of the board members didn't like it. I didn't have a say in it, but.
No, you like it, you like it better than paying for the sign yourself, though.
Well, some of the board members didn't.
I know. Star Telegram's sort of gotten out of the business of putting, paying for everybody's signs, but that doesn't mean there aren't other individuals. I mean, they're not putting their own messages on the digital readouts. They're just
Right.
Basically a billboard there. Not too pretty, but $200,000.
It's $200,000?
Yeah, it's $200,000 bucks, except it's 500 kids' tuition.
Well, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
In the interest of limiting the potential liability for the college, I would like to move that we proceed with this, however, and ask the staff to provide more detailed information as we progress through it, so that we can submit this requirement.
For purposes of discussion, is there a second to that motion?
Oh, come on.
Well, that's, that motion fails. Is there, is there more discussion, or is there another motion to table this, or?
I would move to table until additional information is available to the board.
Okay.
I think that's what Morris was saying, actually, but yeah, I'm sorry.
No, I thought we should go, I mean, I don't understand what's the big deal behind it. I mean, I know it's a lot of money, but if we have one incident, $197,000 is potentially very small according to potential liability. So I, you know, I will tell you, there's always a sleeper on board agendas. A lot of times, I've learned that over my so many years, and I guess this is the sleeper. So I don't, I don't understand, and my feelings are not going to be hurt if you table it. I am a little disappointed that I didn't get a second. This hadn't happened very often in 36 years, but it's not something I'm emotionally invested in. That being said.
That being said, is there a second to, second? All in favor say aye. Aye. Is there opposition? No?
May, may I have a question? I'd like to know what it is you want to know. What, what do we, what can we give you to make you more comfortable with spending this money so that we make sure we come next month with what, with what you need? Mr. Carter, what would you like to know?
You know, I, I guess I like to see it, you know, I see these signs all the time that say happy end of semester, and all kinds of superfluous things that are on them, and I don't know that, and you have, you're trying to say, well, we're going to communicate with 15, 16,000. Not happening. You know, you're 30 minutes, 40 minutes while somebody's going in and out of that, so you're, we're making a fairly substantial expenditure, and, you know, I don't think, by the way, it is a requirement. I think it's a recommendation that's now, that we somehow managed to live without for the last five or six years. But, you know, I can be persuaded. I'm not saying I'm going to vote against it no matter what, but that's all, really.
But I don't understand what you want us to bring back.
Well, can we see the signs? Can we see some examples of?
To design what they want?
How other campuses have used this. I mean, we're talking about emergencies and so forth. We've got the phone, we're getting, we're putting a pretty expensive blue phone system in. I mean, these are sort of toys that are nice to have, but, you know, is this really, this is going to be $200,000 we don't have to invest in education and other opportunities. So everything you spend takes away from something. Is this really worth taking $200,000 from other education-oriented programs?
Ms. Petty, why don't you bring the, the designs or what you've got planned to the next meeting? The details of, of the signage and what we've got somewhere else on the, I know it's on the Northwest campus because I, you can't miss it when you go into the campus, but whatever, what we now have, what, what is proposed, the, the designs, the But whatever, what we now have, what, what is proposed, the, the designs, the, you know, how, are they, having been on the zoning commission, I've heard this, this story a lot, but, you know, how many times it changes and so forth and so on and what kind of messages we're now going to have? How about that? Okay?
It's okay, I'm wondering too, something like texting systems and things which we already have in place would not be enormously more effective, but...
Mr. President, may I say something?
Sure, of course.
Um, is, and what I'd like to know, have we explored other options besides this to achieve the same goal maybe at at least a less expensive cost? That's what I would like to know. Did we go directly to this particular type of signage or are there other options we haven't looked at that would be less costly?
You might also bring us the SACS directive. And I'm still a little confused as to whether these are interior located or if they're on the curb. If they're on the curb, then each city has some onsite sign ordinances that need to be considered. And I would also encourage some sort of directive regarding advertising and how that would be controlled if, if a vendor wanted to place an ad.
Nina, correct me if I'm wrong, excuse me, Ms. Appleman, you have something else? The, the plan is to digitize the entrance signage that's already there, similar to what?
In the case of southeast.
No, but my question is, like on northwest, the, the sign, the major sign for the college is digitized. There's something there. You're talking about digitizing all of them, not getting new signs. 193,000 certainly wouldn't get new signs for all of them, is that correct? In which case, if that's the case, you wouldn't be putting advertising on top of those?
We had to put, it was a whole new sign.
No, that's all, that's a, yeah, that's a whole different thing. We're not talking about that sign. But, but we'll bring all of that to you next month. But we're not, Larry has a whole different sign that was erected by the Fort Worth Star Telegram. The sign that's on northwest is the signs that you approved, what, two and a half years ago, those new signs, that's digitized. That's additional thing, but we'll bring all of that to you.
With lots of pictures.
With lots of pictures.
But Dr. Darlage controls the message on the sign on the highway and you control the sign on the interior.
Okay, so since you're going to do all of that, I have another question. In order for us to get a clearer view, does it require that, is this a contract that we don't go forward with this? I mean, is, if you, if we, if we had approved this tonight, things were going to start being built and signs are going to be starting erected. Okay, so we need to make sure everybody understands exactly what's happening. And I want to know who controls the message? Who approves what goes on there? Does one person have a right to put a sign on? Could I just go out there one day, get in the computer, say, "Happy birthday Gwen," or does a second person have to approve it? So since you're going to go into it, let's just...
Yeah, the keys.
Go into it. Okay? Okay.
Any other instructions from Petty?
I told you that was a sleeper. Now you know what I mean, right?
Is there any other instructions from us, any other observations for Ms. Petty to bring information back to us? Okay, well, that, that item has been tabled and well discussed. And now we will go into the Audit Committee, Audit Finance Committee report. Ms. Appleman and her group and the committee met this last month and did a lot of work and she's got a lengthy report, maybe?
Well, not too bad. It, it was a two and a half hour committee meeting and thanks to Mr. Heed and Mr. Carter for being there and you all helped me with this presentation if I overlook something or misrepresent something. In addition to thanking them, for every hour that we spend at the committee table or this board table, staff, what I would call professional staff and then their support staff must spend at least two additional hours or maybe more to prep for us and to present and bring us along so that we understand the issues and can bring the information to you. So special appreciation to all of you who were at the meeting. You have received in your board packets all the materials that we handled, that we reviewed. I will spare you a reread, I'm sure you've already studied them carefully, but if, Shelley, do you have the minutes? That'll be the, probably the fastest, easiest way to go through this. The first item at the meeting was the presentation by the auditors, accountants at Weaver and they presented the financial statement audit and their letter, their management letter. And their two recommendations are already in process, having to do with centralization for compliance and then significant control processes proving that certain measures were in place. And we were assured by the Chancellor that both of those items had already been addressed and so the consensus of the committee is to recommend the acceptance of that financial audit statement, statement audit and the management letter. And there is an action item later on the agenda to do that. Mrs. McCurdy briefed us on the hotline possibilities and you heard that report tonight. She also gave us a briefing on the Grants Lean Team Process Improvement Project and you will hear more about that. She's going to brief the KELP later this month. The longest part of the meeting was spent in reviewing in great detail the investment policies and practices of the college. We had an enormous amount of material given to us, the investment policies that's on the web and in our policy book, the procedures regarding purchase of securities as well as those relating to existing securities, those are in your packet. Mrs. Chang gave us a comparison of the top 10 community colleges in the state and how they go about their investments. And finally, we decided we're okay. And that we were in a good place with our processes and strategies and we will be recommending to remain with the current operation, current practices. The one thing that's fairly new and we will, and it's attached to your material, is a request from the foundation, Dr. Joe McIntosh, to add some language to the investment policy. And he has collaborated with the investment, excuse me, the financial officers of the college to structure this statement. And Shelley, I think if you'll scroll a little farther, you'll come to something that's labeled "Gas Royalty."
On our, on our computers, it's called Investment Policy, 8 PDF.
And this, this is new language that is to be inserted in the existing policy, investment So we actually have two action items, two motions, I see they're later in the, on the agenda, but, so whenever you're ready.
Can you, can someone summarize the, the Gas Royalty Scholarship Fund resolution? Just, just basically what it, what the purpose of it is?
Good evening, Mr. Greenhill. This is Hadley and trustees. Absolutely. What it is, is basically the, we have, the PFIA tells us how we, we have a procedure and a process of how we invest in our regular fund balance.
Using an acronym, who tells us what?
The Professional Investment...
Okay, alright.
Okay. And so what we've done is, we have some funds that the scholarship funds are going to have a little bit more flexibility in the investment instruments that they can use. They can use a little bit more on commercial paper, they can use some different percentages. And this, this is why we put this language in, to allow them to only be able to use the funds that are, that are proceeding from the scholarship fund, from the, from the gas royalties. So they would have a little bit more flexibility in being able to, to invest. And that's exactly what it's saying right there.
Okay. Alright.
Alright.
Are there any questions for Mr. McLendon on, on this particular resolution? Thank you, Mark. Do any other of the committee members have any additions or other observations?
I don't know about additions.
Other observations?
Talking about return on, pretty much, we were, I think only one of the top 10 community colleges was getting a better return. We'd like more, but they're only one of them. And they were doing it because they literally had tied up their money for long-term investments, so they, they weren't liquid. So among the top 10 community colleges that are, that have liquid assets, we actually are the leader.
There's Ms. Chang back there, she's hiding, but she's part of that.
She just gave herself a pat on the back.
She gave herself a pat on the back. Y'all are doing a great job, thank you, I appreciate. And thank you Audit Committee for, that's an awesome report and thank you for the meeting. It was, that's a good one. Any other questions to the, to the Audit Committee before we ask to go to some action items? First of all, one of the action items would be to, will be to accept the recommendation of the Audit Committee to the, of the financial statement audit and management letter. Do I hear a motion to accept that?
So moved.
So moved? Second? All in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed? None? Thank you. What I had proposed, what I propose, what I'd like to, I would like to entertain a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Audit Committee to continue with our, of the TCC investment policy and procedures. And if this be our, although we usually do it next month, maybe, that we do this as our annual confirmation of our review of the investment policy and procedures. I think we can go ahead and, and make that annual confirmation that we're required to do every year anyway. Do I hear such a motion?
So moved.
So moved?
Second.
There's a second? All in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed? None? Thank you very much. Now, the third item, this is an action item, is to accept the, is to accept the recommendation to establish, to, to adopt the, the resolution that is on our, well, to adopt the Gas Royalty Scholarship Fund. And do I hear such a motion, a motion to approve the addition to the Gas Royalty Scholarship Fund to our investment policy?
So moved.
So moved? Second? Okay. All in favor say aye? Any opposed? None? Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a discussion of budget review. The Governance Committee talked about this at some length. There's been some discussion amongst all of us about improving our budget review process. And the Governance Committee recommended that we meet as a committee as a whole to discuss this. And we even, I think we had a date, like March the 24th, to meet as a committee as a whole to discuss the budget review process, the, the, some goals that the Board of Directors may want to advise the staff in advance. These are what our priorities are, the, the calendar for it and so forth. And, and as I say, it was just the consensus of the, of the Governance Committee that would do it as a whole. I know the Budget Committee is off, the Audit Finance Committee has offered to do it as well, but I'll open up the, the matter for discussion. What's your preference, if any, on this, this matter? Okay?
I, I had originally thought it would be more flexible as a small committee, but Ms. Van Griffin's persuaded me that a work session with the whole board would be quite workable and would be preferable. So I, I think I defer to that.
I, I, my, my initial thought was that it would be a more workable thing if we had just a small committee, three people. It'd be, I think, more flexible in discussing the issues, but I'm not against what the board recommends.
If we were to go for a committee as a whole, Mr. Heed, would you be willing to be the liaison with the staff to, to kind of, I don't know how we can do that legally, get some, to kind of put some structure to this as to, because when we, if we meet on the, on the 24th or some other day to have some structure to this and, would you be willing to be a liaison or?
Yeah, okay.
Excuse me, go ahead.
I, I would be willing to do that. I think Kristen has a...
Sure.
No, not about you.
No, just, I'm just opening up for discussion.
Okay, so you're willing to do that?
I'm willing.
Oh, that's great. No, the suggestion of doing it as a committee of, of the whole is when we talk about priorities and parameters and specifics, the whole board needs to be engaged. And if we're not, then it's a duplication of, of communicating and messaging and then deciding if we agree or not. So I think the bigger challenge is finding a date that works for everybody. And Saturday mornings were fresh and the, in the evenings, not so much. So I think we just have to decide on that date, if there is one, that everybody could meet together.
It sounds like a consensus is going to be that we, we have a committee as a whole to discuss this and the date that came out was March the 24th, I think it was March the 24th. At nine o'clock, Bill Greenhill, I want to read at Southeast Campus. I'm, I'm committed to, to go read at the, at the reading festival.
Well, we deferred until 10:30.
We deferred it till 10:30? Okay, I forgot about that. Because I, I really wa, it's a long story. I'd just love to go out there and read to the kids. But 10:30 at the 24th, is, is that going to work for everybody?
Well, Mr. Greenhill says, I attempted to make that point last meeting that we should do it as a committee as a whole.
Your wisdom was accepted.
I, thank you, and I will adapt my calendar to the timeframe. And I'm delighted that this year we won't be in conflict with the reading on the Southeast Campus, because last year, if you recall, we had a, a board meeting that day also.
That's right.
So I will try to do two events in one day this time.
Well, and we can make it 11 o'clock.
No, no, 10:30 is fine.
We want to make sure you have time to read.
If I, if I get excited and start reading "Goodnight Moon" more than once, I'll make...
Oh, "Goodnight Moon."
Oh, I've got, I've got a hold.
Is somebody going to monitor his reading selections?
I will tell the story that my, my middle son's story is something I can't do in public. But it sounds like that, it sounds like it's consensus that we're going to meet on March the 24th at 10:30 and that Conrad Heed and anybody else he'd like to recruit can set up a structure and, and it sounds like a great idea. I don't think we need to take a vote on that, do we, or do we?
Does anybody have any conflicts or...
Does anybody have any conflicts?
Okay.
Okey dokey.
Great.
Alright. Thank you very much.
Well, Mr. Heed, we'll look forward to, you're working with Mark McLendon and Nancy Chang, the other two will normally lead this and make sure that they have your instructions.
Our new guy has a big job.
I look forward to that.
Okay, God, thank you so much for your volunteering. Madam Chancellor, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Greenhill. I'm going to call for Angela Robinson to come now to talk about our 457 Plan amended document, and she has some guests here with us. We like to think of them as one of our partners. They've been with us for a long, long time and so they come to support Angela and Dr. Ricardo Coronado in their quest to get this plan adoption approved. Angela?
Board members, you have in front of you a board resolution to update the 457B Plan document, which is our deferred comp document. It has been reviewed by outside legal counsel who's board certified in probate and taxation and been approved by him, that's Bill Blair. I'm going to ask Ms. Deltre Hayes to come to the stand. She's our velik stand, sorry, like I'm in court. And tell the judges...
We'll swear her in.
To come to the podium and describe to the board what the changes are very briefly. Thank you.
Will you lift your right hand?
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Good evening, Mrs. Hadley, President Greenhill, and board members. The purpose of the 457B Plan document resolution being on the agenda is to amend and adopt enacted federal legislation. There are four pension acts being adopted: the Pension Protection Act, the Heroes Earnings Assistance and Relief Tax Act, the Worker Retiree and Employer Recovery Act, and the Small Business Jobs Act. The purpose of the document has to be, the amendments have to be included and stated in the acts of the document in order to keep the plan document in compliance. However, the plan does not have, it has an option to elect or not to elect those provisions. And if the provisions are elected, none of your current participants or your retirees would be affected unless they utilize one of those adopted provisions.
I heard an oxymoron in there. You said, you said these are required, and you said optional. Will you say that one more time?
The acts have to, are required to be placed in the document to keep it compliant. But the provisions, you can elect.
Oh, okay.
That they're in your plan or not. So they're optional.
Okay.
But the actual acts have to be included in the plan document.
All right. Does anybody have any hard questions in this regard?
I think, lady, we actually have to approve this.
Yes.
Otherwise, they don't, otherwise, they don't get to retire.
Okay. As I say, if you're not careful, I may not do the right thing, and you'll have to read this on, this thing. Anyway, is there any discussion about this resolution? It's in your package, and we're all reading it?
I think there's a typo in the adoption agreement. Under number one, plan effective date, and the checkbox indicates that this will be effective 12/3/31/2011.
That's correct.
What's 12/3/31?
Now, is that, that's in the plan, but not in the resolution. Is that correct? Yeah, okay.
So it should be 12/31? Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Appleman. I'd like to do this without having to read it. And so, without objection, entertain a motion to have this resolution adopted as is contained in our package without having to read it. And I don't hear an objection. So is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? None. That passes. Okay.
I want to call on Mark McLendon to come now for our monthly financial report. Mark?
Thank you, Chancellor. Okay. I think we are, we're going to give you one general comments. We looked at all the balance sheets, and we thought there was nothing extraordinary. Only thing we'd like to say is that we have increased, we have received our cash from our taxes. We received about 58 million, and we, which is showing that our funds in Fund 10 and Fund 40 are doing, they're in about the 60 percentile. So now we are going to look at our income statement, all right? And that is on page five? Five? Okay. And, all right. On page five, you will notice the first line, and there it is. It's your maintenance tax. Again, it's at 76 percent. If we looked at what we do every year, and I repeat it for everybody who's hearing to us, I mean, every month, sorry, is we take the total, we're in the fifth month of the fiscal year. So that means if you divide it five by 12, it would be 42 percent of the year has transpired. So we look at anything that has, that has an expenditure percentile higher than 50 percent, and that we have not mentioned. So we mention, we go about, if we've mentioned it in the previous months, we won't repeat it. But if there is a question, we can certainly hope to field any question you have, or if not, we can get back. So you will notice that our maintenance tax is looking, it's right now at 76 percentile, and only 50 percent, 40 percent, 42 percent of the year has transpired. And that's the reason why, is we get our taxes paid in December, January, and February. And this is a good thing. It's a very good thing. Because we have our revenue very well measured before the year is, is transpired, and we can count on that. So that's one issue there, okay, that I think is a good thing. The other item, you will look at your maintenance CIP item, right? Right there, is also 76 percentile. And it's the same thing. We received our money in December and January, these financial statements as of Jan. 31, 2012. Okay? We would like to show your total revenue, if you look at your total revenue, is on that bottom line right there. It's also, well, I'm sorry, Shelley, you've done it right. The debt service, which is also part of the money that we receive from our taxes, is also at 76 percentile, because that's the money that we receive from our taxes. We get those three monies at the same time, and it goes, and that's why it's at the 76 percentile, which is good. If we look at the total revenue, at, we are at 69 percentile instead of 42. And I think this is, this is certainly a good thing in higher education, and certainly for Tarrant County. I like this very much. It's a great thing. Go to the next statement. And we're going to talk about some of the items that we have not mentioned. The first one is if you look at the insurance line item, you will notice that insurance is sitting at 115 percent. And that's because we have paid our policies for umbrella policies, education, legal, and general liability, and therefore a larger period. So that's why you have such a hard, it's for, you have longer than the fiscal year. All right? Now, we will go down. We have mentioned this, but since it is the highest number, I always mention it. And it is a general and duplicating. And what we have there, we have 350 K that we will charge back to the campuses. We are renegotiating this campus, and we're looking at ways to bring the cost of printing down also. The world is actually changing from paper to paperless. So we're looking for better economies and new ways to look at copy centers, and the new theory of printing. It's, so we're seeing changes. But that's why you see this number that is high, all right? If we go to, I think we have another, page seven, we have insurance again, is that right? And what we have there for insurance, which is also at 75 percent, is that's where we made our property renewal. And that's why it's higher. We're paying for a whole period. And as we mentioned, always in government, we encumber the whole amount. That's why it's shown there. I think that the next thing, now we can go to page eight. Is that right, ma'am? And this? Yes, ma'am.
What about utilities, the 86 percent?
Oh, that is exactly, that is a good thing. And utilities, that's the same thing. We've encumbered it. I want to say that this team, and the real estate team, and the purchasing team have actually negotiated a five-year deal, which you approved on utilities, to where we have a very good KW rate. But what happens is we encumber the whole year.
KW? Kilowatt?
Kilowatt. The kilowatt. It's, okay, it's a kilowatt rate is, I'd like to have that in my own home, with what we negotiated. It's a very good rate compared to the market. And years to come, you'll actually see how good that rate is. All right? Yes, ma'am? Any other question on that?
Same question on custodial services?
On custodial.
Are they paid in advance?
Well, no, you encumber.
You encumber.
See, what happens, Mr. Heed, is we will create a blanket order, and we're going to say the blanket order, the total expenditure is 1.2 million or $400,000. And then we, you're going to see that the difference between your expenditure and encumbrances, your expenditure grows and your encumbrance goes down. But in governmental accounting, we always put the whole encumbrance there so that you never go over the budget. So that's the way we do that. All right? Any other question before we go to the next? The next item is, is the revenue on food services. And it's sitting, you've got it there, it's sitting on 68 percent. Now, we have asked the question, why is it 68 percent? We're just having people eating more food. I don't, I can't tell you what's driving that, other than our sales are up, and that's the only thing I can tell the board. We're trying to investigate what it is, and I don't have a good answer, other than the revenue is up on food, and I don't know. Maybe there's, all right? Those are all the items that I have. Is there any other question on any particular item, ma'am?
Can you break that food down by campus, the food income?
We can, we can.
Do we know who's got?
Who has the better food, yeah?
Well, I can tell you who is the biggest consumer.
Trinity River Campus.
Yes, ma'am. It is Trinity River is actually more than 50 percent of the other campuses. And that a lot has to do, maybe the Radio Shack organization is having more dinners, or I can't tell you that. But, yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Jurors, judges, all those people eat there. They like, they like Dr. Ferguson's campus.
Absolutely. Anyways, any other questions from the board on any expense item, or is that good? Okay. Now, we want to move to the investment. All right? Okay. It's okay, Shelley. Okay. The investment policy, we always want to show you how these things connect. That's where you see the, if you looked at our beginning balance, let's just show what we had, our book value balance on the pools, you'll show, it'll show you 128 mil, and now it's 162. That's that money that we got in, that we've telling you from our taxes. All right? Now, what we want to show you is the new things that has happened. We've taken a short-term commercial paper, really short-term, and it's going for three months. And we put in, we bought 10 mil, and it's on point two, it's about 0.24 percent. So instead of having it in the pool money above, we're looking at the term money, that's three months. It gives us a little bit better. As you can see, the rates are the rates. All right? The other transactions I'd like to show you, we have, and this is something I want to show you, and this is what we explained to the Investment Committee, and, you know, we're very thankful that they took the time to look at what our process is, and why it is. This is a callable. This is, this is, this interest rate, if you look at the maturity on this callable, is really July 18, 2014. However, when the interest rates are good, they're able to call it every quarter. So this is what's happening in the market. They went ahead and called our 10 mil. And then if you look at, so that's when we do the analysis of the investments. That's why we look at, we look at the callable, because what's happening in the market is, you may get a great interest over three years, but on the first quarter, if it's a good thing, then they call it, they call it back, because it's not a good investment for them. So that's one of the things that we would not have. On the commercial paper, it's a one-year investment. Now, if you want to look at the last one, we had $18 million on Freddie Mac, and it's within the parameters that we explain in the process, that we typically don't go beyond three years. And we only look for government securities, and we get three bids. And if you look at, the best thing we could do at this time was 18 mil. We did not even have 20 mil in the market. So that's the one. So if we look at our yields, all right, let's look at how we do with the market. If we look at our total yield, our total portfolio is about 46 percent against the Treasury 13, Treasury bill 13 week is 2 percent. So we're about 0.44 percent. The comment that Mr. Carter did, we are very happy. We have a lot of appreciation to all our peers in the top 10 community colleges. It just so happens that Nancy and our team have done very well in their investments, and we are one of the best in the, in the whole community college system, and we hope to continue that way. All right? And if we look at the 26 yield is the same thing. We're about 41 percent over the T-bill. Any question on the investment portfolio, or?
Thank you. Any questions? That sounds great.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, everybody, get out your iPhones. We have a little bump here on the road. Our distinguished chancellor has a birthday party. Noel just informed her on the, on the 24th of March. So.
My granddaughter, I'm sorry.
I think we're going to keep you out of.
You're number one, I'm sorry. I had forgotten that.
So April the 7th, is anybody, can look at your calendars, if you have them? Is April the 7th a good day?
Mr. Greenhill? You know that April 7th, I will be.
You'll be on a cruise.
Yes.
Well.
Would everybody like to go?
He's going, he's going to, he's going to France. Going on a big tour, okay.
When are you leaving, Mr. Heed?
On the 26th of March.
Is there an evening that we could do it?
I don't have a calendar here, so.
I have a calendar here.
Okay.
An evening in March? Spring break is the week of the 12th through the 16th. And so we wouldn't want to do it on the 17th. We were a little bit reluctant about the 10th, the week, the day, the Friday before spring break. But perhaps that would.
What if we did it on the fourth Thursday? Over the years, I've learned to keep my Thursday nights pretty clear.
What, Thursday of March? March 22nd?
Will that work?
No.
Well, it doesn't work for me, just because the Texas Municipal League.
Okay.
Has me down to speak, and they changed their date so I could be there. So I hate to say no to that. My calendar's crazy.
Maybe the other hole.
I'm sorry?
Maybe the other hole.
I knew that'd be the challenge. It's okay, we'll find a date. Why does it have to be in April? I mean, the first part of April?
I think the budget process is beginning.
They're into their budget already, really.
But, you know, they can't do it without us. I mean, I don't mean to be coy. I just want to say, unless we kind of are on board and have an understanding, and if you take time to make sure everybody's on the same page, and everybody has an understanding, in the end, it goes faster and smoother than if you leave one of us behind. And we have a lot of questions, and we get the board meeting, and we table it. So.
There's a fifth Thursday, Thursday in March.
We won't be here. Achieve a dream.
Yeah, that's New York trip.
Nobody's here that week. All the boards out of town.
March 19th through the.
Are there any dates?
Does Saturday, does March 10th work for everybody?
But there's a weekend there.
Saturday still. That's the Saturday right before spring break.
Well, that'll work for me. That'll work.
What about staff? I mean.
Anybody leaving early for spring break? Front row?
Not now.
Second row? Five, three to cap. Nina? You're gone. Peter, you say you're gone? No.
Is Mark going to be here, and Nancy? Nancy?
Nancy?
Nancy, you're going to be here.
You're here on the 10th? Well, perhaps we make it early, and then you get to leave early. How about that? So the 10th?
I think if we stick to just the parameters that we're looking for, then we can keep it to a fair degree.
Okay. I appreciate your accommodating my baby's, my grandbaby's birthday party. I'm so sorry. I just.
That's all right.
Okay. March 10th it will be.
At what time?
What time do you want to start, now that Mr. Greenhill doesn't have to read?
We can start any time.
Oh, not too early, though. Nine?
Nine o'clock?
Nine?
Okay. Very well. Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay. Done. That's Chancellor's report.
Well, thank you. After taking all that time, I shall be brief. The first thing I want to do, most of the board members have met our newest and our final Vice Chancellor, and I want to call him up front so that you can see him up close and personal. He is Tim Marshall, and he tells me that that's what. He is Tim Marshall, and he tells me that that's what everybody calls him until he's done something really bad, and then he's, he's called Timothy Marshall. But Tim is the vice chancellor for information and technology. He joined us just a few weeks ago after serving over twenty-five years as a technology executive in higher education, defense, manufacturing, and banking. And he most recently was the chief information officer and the senior executive director at the Orange County Public Schools in Florida, the tenth largest school district in the nation. So, he's been accustomed to dealing with large organizations. He holds a bachelor's degree in computer science and a master's degree in management systems from the University of Baltimore. He's been active in community affairs where he's lived, including volunteering at the high school band, athletic, and dance competitions. Can you dance, Tim?
Yes, ma'am, I used to teach Arthur Murray until I got through my first year of college.
So, now, Tim, we know we get free dance lessons. He's also served as a soccer coach and referee at recreational, high school, and college levels. His civic activities have also included participation in various Susan G. Komen breast cancer awareness events and many others. Tim, we welcome you as a part of our team, and I will tell you that Tim's very first day of work here was January twenty-third. And he was baptized that day, and all things count. We had a two-day retreat, it was the very first day. He didn't even get to sign up for his paycheck. He came straight to work with us and fit in as though he had been with us all the time. So, welcome, Peter, and say hello to the board members and everybody else. What did I call him?
Peter.
You're Peter. Okay. I know who you are, Peter, and I know who this is. This is Timothy we're talking about. Welcome, Timothy. Say hello to us.
Chancellor Hadley, Professor, I mean, President Greenhill. Thank you for the opportunity that you've provided me to lead technology at Tarrant County College. I have a passion for education and made a significant difference in my life. And I just try to make it easier for the next generations to come to make and find their way into this great institute. So, I'm looking forward to a lot of hard work. I enjoy it. It's not work, really, it's a, it's a passion. So, again, I want to thank you all for letting me apply my passion.
Thank you. Thank you. We have one other person, I believe, here. Bill, you have two people to introduce.
Thank you, Chancellor Hadley.
Last year, he was being, I mean, last month, he was being introduced.
Yes, and I'm glad that our new CIO left the mic on, because remember, I had a lot of trouble just getting into work. Mrs. Hadley, Mr. Greenhill, members of the board. One of the best parts about my job, there's a whole lot of good things that are going on, but it's bringing new talented people into the family of TCC. And I have a wonderful person that I want to introduce today. Our new director of academic affairs at Weekend College is Margaret Taylor. Margaret, why up here? She's like, come on down now. Margaret holds a master's of education and curriculum and instruction from Texas A&amp;M. Her teaching background is in chemistry, where she developed honors and advanced chemistry curriculum. Mrs. Taylor comes to Southeast Campus from Concord College in Dallas, where she was academic dean overseeing the academic compliance process, the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, and Texas Workforce Policies and Procedures. She created and implemented a departmental institutional effectiveness plan, and served as academic dean at Westwood College in Dallas, where she is credited with restructuring personnel in the academic department, setting goals for the student growth, and managing six program chairs and sixty full-time and adjunct faculty. Ladies and gentlemen, Margaret Taylor.
Thank you. Welcome. Chancellor and the board of trustees, about a month ago, I had a panel interview with the, some of the staff members at Southeast Campus, and they were some of the most delightful, intelligent people I'd been around. And I just left thinking, I want to be part of this. I like this. And fortunately for me, it's just an honor that I get to help Tarrant County College. But also, the camaraderie in this room is excellent as well. There's laughter, and it's just a very positive environment, and I'm happy to be here.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate you.
She's wonderful. We're real lucky to have her. What's even more exciting is watching the growth of our internal employees. And Joe Clem is one of those. Joe? Oh, you're right behind me. I get scared easily, sorry. Joe is our new director of library services. Joe holds a master's of library science from University of North Texas and has served at the Mary Couch Burnett Library at Texas Christian University. Ms. Clem has been employed at Tarrant County College for five years, serving as public services librarian and assistant library director. She has played a vital role in increasing the technology available to students, and has improved customer service, contributing to the growth of the library at Southeast Campus. She brings skills in project facilities management, along with leadership qualities with community involvement programs, which include art shows, poetry slam, literature readings, now that you can stay all day, and collaboration with elementary students. So, with that, I'd like to introduce Joe Clem once again to the board.
Thank you so much. I so appreciate you guys taking the reading festival into consideration.
Oh, absolutely.
As you plan your events, that just warms my heart. And I am so excited to have this new position and to be able to serve Tarrant County College in this new way. And I do want to offer to you, Chancellor Hadley, that you are more than welcome to bring the baby to the reading festival for its birthday. That would be a very cheap birthday party.
Thank you. I wish I could, but she's not here.
Mr. Heed, has your picture been made to be put on the, in the library, reading a book at Southeast? Has he been out there?
Since you mention it, I wrote in my notebook just a few minutes ago, "Mr. Heed, read poster." So, you'll be getting a call from me in the next few weeks, and we'll make an appointment to take your photo and put your picture on a poster that says "read."
Well, thank you for the opportunity. And you've got to pick out a book, I mean, it's got to be an intellectual book. I mean, it's not a real estate book.
No, it doesn't. It can be Goodnight Moon if you want it to be.
Yes, a wine book. It could be a wine, mine's a Jack Reacher book, it's really, ooh, it's a murder mystery.
But Joe, congratulations on your promotion. We're very proud of you. Thank you. The next item I have on my agenda was caused by Mrs. Appleman sending me an email or giving me a little note, I'm not sure which. She always gives me things that she reads. She's a part of my reading team. She reads all these things, and she sends them to me. She about had a heart attack, I think, when she read in the Dallas Morning News about all these students who were getting kicked out of school because of problems with financial aid. And when she sent the note to me, I thought, well, we don't have that problem, I don't think. But as much as I know, I know I don't always know every detail about everything, so I went straight to the source and asked David Jimenez if he would look at that and tell us what kind of shape we were in. So, I'm very pleased to report to you that David gave me a report, and it shows that we had one thousand nine hundred and eighteen students who were in the same situation, Mrs. Appleman, that they were in Dallas, at Dallas County Community College, except we helped all those students, one thousand nine hundred and eighteen. This was about students who have difficulties with financial aid for one reason or another, probably because they didn't pay something back, or didn't take enough classes or whatever, and they come with hardships, and they have reasons why they didn't successfully complete the semester, whatever. And we've been working with those students for years to try to get them on the right track. And so, we have this by-campus, a breakdown by campus, of the students who were given an academic success plan, the number of students who were on probation, the total timeframe of students by campus, and then the total number of students that were served, which is one thousand nine hundred and eighteen. And I thought all of you would be pleased to know that on this side of the train, that we do it just a little bit differently, and that's to the benefit of our students. I wanted to report that. My recent activities, I will start with today. Today, we were at the Tarrant County College Opportunity Center after having jumped on a plane early this morning to get back in time. Mr. Heed and I were in Washington, DC, and he's going to talk a little bit about that in a minute. But Mrs. Appleman, Mr. Greenhill, and Mr. Heed were there, along with staff and others, to accept a check for four hundred fifty-eight thousand twenty-five dollars. Thank you, David. I can always count on you to know the nickels and the dimes, that's good. They add up. Four hundred fifty-eight thousand twenty-five dollars for training programs for business and industry. And we're always excited about getting those grants. One of the most exciting things about the grant today were two things. Number one, we get to help a lot of people stay in their jobs and get training for better paying jobs, higher skilled jobs. And just as important, and perhaps more importantly, we get to train a number of people who are out of work. The grant doesn't have as many slots for those who are out of work as we would like to see. As a matter of fact, I talked with David Wells and Troy Vaughn today about getting with companies to write grants that would be specifically designated for the unemployed people of Tarrant County. And Troy tells me that they're already looking at that, and perhaps we'll get more of those. But this program had three hundred and forty-eight job slots, I believe, fifty-four, three hundred fifty-four job slots, that our people will be training for. And we also got to see some of the new equipment that's over there, that is very, very impressive. And so, I'll invite all of you, and even TCC people, who have not been to the Opportunity Center, to go. You will be impressed at the equipment that's there and the work that we do. And all of this, of course, is outside, generally outside of the credit program. Representative Mark Shelton was also there, and I solicited his support to help us start talking a different language about success at the community college level. He serves on the Higher Education Appropriations Committee. So, he's a very good one to have on our side, to hear our story. He didn't make any commitments, but he heard me, and hopefully, he will, he will make some later. But that was a very good day in the neighborhood over there today. Very good. On January twenty-seventh, I was asked to participate in the inauguration of President Fred Slaybock at Texas Wesleyan. And he asked me to be there to speak on behalf of higher education institutions in the area. I took advantage of the opportunity to tell them all that I thought it was very appropriate that I was asked to represent all the institutions, since Tarrant County College is the center of all their universes. And I wanted to tell them that fifty-nine percent, average fifty-nine percent of all the transfer students to Texas Wesleyan University for the last five years have come from Tarrant County College. And this semester, thirty-nine percent of the undergraduate student body at Texas Wesleyan University have come from Tarrant County College. And so, that's a great, that's a great thing for us. And of course, the largest number of our students don't even go there, they go to UT Arlington. So, we really are the center of their universes, and I think it was a very good day. A lot of people in that audience learned a lot from that two little, two-minute speech that I did that day. But I never give up an opportunity to talk about the great work that we do. The other thing I want to tell you is that on January twenty-eighth through thirtieth, a team of us were ordered to Atlanta for the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools. And when I say ordered, I mean just that. They tell us who has to be there. And we were there, David Wells, Mark McLendon, Joy Gates-Black, our sex liaison, Steve Hagstrom, and our new executive director of research, Terry Day. And it was a very, very useful and fruitful day for us as we prepare for our reaffirmation. We were in the class of 2014, and they only had institutions in our class there to talk about the various things that we must do. Excuse me. One of the highlights of our reaffirmation will be our academic, our Effectiveness Plan, Institutional QEP, Quality Enhancement Plan. And it's going to be very expensive. When they first told me how much it was going to cost, I said, oh, no, there's no way it could possibly cost that much money, but it will. And so, as we set the budget, board members, get your heads around one parameter that we'll have to do, and that is, we'll have to budget for the QEP. I'm told that we can expect to spend probably somewhere around a million dollars, because, yes, because it's over a five-year period. And most of that money is going to go for employee costs, because we are so large with so many moving parts, and we are going to need to have people involved in helping us at all levels. Probably because of our size, we'll have to have liaison every campus to help us with it. The QEP is going to be centered around thinking.
Critical.
Critical. Critical thinking. And that's a very broad topic. We'll have to narrow it down. We're not, we're not sure yet how it will come out, but we'll keep you posted as we go along. There are a number of things that we're required by the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges to do, and we don't have any option about doing those things as long as we want to stay accredited by that body. And we must stay accredited, because otherwise, we would not qualify for federal financial aid and other federal programs that benefit our students so much. The next thing I want to mention to you is that on February third, Teeda Ferguson and I, excuse me, were on her campus to participate in Kids Vision Fest. And I just wish every one of you in the room could have been there to see that. It was absolutely an awesome situation. It was sponsored by Alcon Laboratories, Isolor Vision, which is a French eyeglass company that has a foundation, as well as the Kids Vision for Life Foundation. And they invited five hundred children to our campus to get tested for their eye vision, their eye health. And when I left the auditorium, I walked down the hallway to Heed just to look, to see. It was amazing, and it was just a sea of people with their children there to get their vision tested. We were told that a significant number, perhaps a majority, of children in public school today don't get their eyes examined, and many of them do not see well, and that's why they have so many difficulties learning. At the end of our discussion, Commissioner, not Commissioner, but County Judge Whitley was asked to be there, as well as Mayor Betsy Price. And so, they're forming a coalition, and I thought, well, I should take advantage of this while they're all here. So, I asked them if they did not have some program for adults that we could help with vision eye checks at Tarrant County College, because perhaps some of our students have difficulty because they still can't see well enough. The physician who was there, the ophthalmologist who does work for the state of Texas, says that when he goes into the prisons to test their new populations, ninety percent of the folk he tests have never had an eye exam. That's almost eye, eye, mind-boggling to think of that. So, I'm thinking, if that's the case with that population, that may very well be the case with many of our students. Alcon Laboratories agreed to work with us to figure out some way they can work with adults at Tarrant County College. So, perhaps we'll get something out of that. Otherwise, we got a great, we did a great community service, again, with all of those children and families there. And then, as I said a minute ago, yesterday, well, not yesterday, Sunday through today, actually, the Community College National Legislative Summit was held in Washington, DC. And Mr. Heed and I were there, and he's going to talk a little bit about our wonderful experience up there. Mr. Heed?
It was a wonderful experience. This is the ACCT and AAACC Community College National Legislative Summit. And the first day was the new trustee academy, and I can assure you, it was a very working environment. Just to show you, give you a feel for some of the things that they covered, the fundamentals of being an effective trustee, the trustee's role, the board's role, advocacy, effective meetings, operating procedures, media relationships, student success, understanding the budget, financial management. the budget, financial management, and capital budgets. I mean, they covered all this in a very short period of time, but it was very thorough and they gave us a lot of things to take back with us and read. And then on Tuesday, we started talking about advocacy. The meetings included presentations by two former senators. Robert Bennett talked about advocacy and then Pete Dimmitchi from New Mexico talked on, he kinda got off the subject a little bit, talked about what he considers the major problem in the US today, which is the debt. And then we had a panel discussion of three political columnists talking about today's political scene, which is very interesting. And then they had a choice of things to go to after that on Tuesday. And then on Wednesday, we had Roberto Rodriguez. He's the Special Assistant to the President for Education. And he talked about the educational situation today, the things that the federal government is doing, the goals that they've set, the programs that they hope to get working, the resources that they've allocated to it, and the evaluation of their programs. And I thought that was one of the highlights of the meeting. And then in the afternoon, we were to go up on the Hill and talk to our representatives. Well, we got started early, but there was an address by Nancy Pelosi. And then we visited Senator John Cornyn, Representatives Joe Barton, Kay Granger, and Michael Burgess, and the educational staff person for Kenny Martin. All four of those represent areas of the Tarrant County community. I was very impressed with the knowledge that they all had of the mission of community colleges in general, their grasp of what is needed in terms of education and training to get new jobs established and to prepare our citizens for proper employment, and the important role that community colleges play in that effort. Also, their understanding of the economics behind community colleges and the effectiveness, the effectiveness of the community college. They talked, several of them talked about the bang for the buck that community college gives to the US. They also understood the necessary resources that community colleges require. Nancy Pelosi mentioned that in particular. That's necessary to accomplish our missions. And then the other thing I was impressed with was the tremendous access that we had to all of our representatives. Reginald Gates had a lot, lot to do with that, but it was, they really welcomed us. They were warm and they're welcome and they listened to everything we had to say. And so that was impressive. And bottom line, I guess, if you've been to Washington, particularly at this point in time, you get, you get the impression that you're at the center of the war, of everything going on in the world. So not only did we have all this going on and they had to leave us to go make votes and this kind of thing, but at the hotel that we stayed at, when I got there, CPAC was there. And they had a national convention of these young Republicans and all the candidates were there and gave their speeches. And coupled with that, we had the protestors, the Occupy, Washington was there, they blocked off the streets and this kind of thing. And then when they left, then in came the Vice President of China. And of course, we've all read about those things. And Henry Kissinger was there. And you really felt like that you were kind of at the, at the center of the universe. So that was, you know, you're seeing what's happening on a world scene on a real-time basis right there, you know, when you're there. So it was a tremendous opportunity for me and any of us that have that opportunity to go to these meetings in the future ought to take advantage of those things. And I will also comment that our chancellor, everybody knows Irma up there. And they all respect her. And she is a tremendous voice for the community college system in general and TCC in particular. She did a great job.
Thank you, Ms. Heed. Thank you. You've done that so exceptionally well. I will just add one thing. You said it, I just want to highlight the fact that our congressional delegation, without exception, knows Tarrant County College. And they appreciate so much what we do. They listen to what we say. They are not, one of the, one of the past senators warned us on Tuesday, I guess, about when you go on the Hill tomorrow, you know, "Don't go over asking, 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 asking for everything and telling, telling, telling. Go over and ask a question. Just, you know, ask them, 'What do you think about this or that?'" So I told Mr. Heed on the way, I said, "Well, I'm gonna ask the question. I'm not gonna suggest anything." Because as you know, the community colleges around the country, AAACC, the American Association of Community Colleges, American Association of Community, American Association of Community College Trustees are all pushing the Dream Act. Everybody is really behind it. And we all know that it's been bogged down in Congress and it just hasn't gone anyplace. And in community college, people feel very strongly about getting some resolution on the Dream Act. So I was bold enough, already knowing the answer, I thought, I still asked our four congressional people, "How do you feel about the Dream Act?" Well, it was interesting because they, it's a political hot potato and they don't want to touch it. And for those of you who don't know what the Dream Act is, it's, and there are various versions. One congressman told me, "Well, you know, there are so many versions of it." But what it amounts to basically is that there is a proposal to allow illegal children, children who were brought to this country as youngsters, who grew up in this country, went to the public schools, graduated from high school. They're in our community colleges in large numbers. And there is a proposal to allow them a pathway to citizenship. And it's very controversial. And, you know, we, I don't know how many we have. One of our congressmen asked me, "How many students do you have at Tarrant County College in that category?" And I'm gonna find out. I told him, "I'm not sure we even have a way of knowing that." Because we don't ask whether they are American citizens or not when they come to register. What we do know is that some years ago, I guess it's probably been eight or nine years ago, when the state legislature in Texas passed a law that allows illegal-
Undocumented.
Undocumented. Undocumented students. Thank you, Mark. They're illegal immigrants. That's what they are. People don't like to use that word, but they're undocumented citizens, undocumented immigrants and not citizens, to take college courses at the in-state tuition rate. They're not required to pay out-of-state tuition. So I don't know how many students we have in that category. And I don't know if we have a way of finding out, but David, we'll look, we'll see if we can locate that. Interestingly, when we got to Congressman Barton, and I asked him that question. And he said, "Well, 90%, I would guess, of my constituents have not been for that. However, I don't know what those lines are gonna look like when the courts are finally finished drawing them. There is one scenario," he said, "that would put perhaps about 90% of my constituents in another category. And they are going to feel very differently about this and I am going to have to listen and I will represent the views of my constituents." So there's at least one representative, a congressperson, who's saying, "I'll take a look at this." But that's, that's a very big issue. But the biggest issues that we face is, most people didn't expect that act to pass. We were all committed to at least talking with our delegations about it. But the big thing is the Pell Grants. Because there are a lot of discussions about cutting the amount that a student can qualify for a Pell Grant and some other things. And we were also pushing hard to keep the Carl Perkins dollars coming. So those were the really big issues for us. There were a number of them. We have a green sheet that's front and back. But there were, yes, but there were a number that, that were really the hot potatoes on that. You know, you walk away from the legislative summit knowing that you really do have to go to those things and hear what's going on and participate and know that we're all in it together. Pretty much, you know, all those people understand fully well what the community college does. And the other thing that I ask of our congressional delegation is that if they would change the language, change our dialogue, when they start talking about community colleges and talk about completers in a very different way and not just graduates of degrees. Because we all know that many students who come to us are never going to get an associate degree or even, in many cases, a one-year certificate. As I said to our state representative today, Mark Shelton, "Look at all these students we're going to help and they're going to go out and get jobs or they're going to get better jobs and they will not have a degree. Yet, y'all don't count them for us when you look at our success." So that's, that's perhaps the biggest picture that we have. Mr. Carter just sent me a note and asked if the meningitis immunization requirements affect our spring enrollment. And the answer is yes, they did affect our enrollment. On the other side of the coin, however, I will tell you that we were quite successful, I think, in getting the majority of our students help who didn't have the money to pay for those very expensive meningitis shots. And Dr. Woody Kegler, who is our medical director along with some of the other staff people, the nursing people, especially Pat Marlin on Northeast Campus, some of the others worked really, really hard to find inexpensive ways for our students to get their immunizations. And the Tarrant County Health Department needs a really big shout-out on this one because they really came to the rescue. And not only did they make the vaccine available for, at a very low cost, and I'm thinking something like $25, $25 and shaking their head, but they also made the shots available at all of their centers throughout Tarrant County. So we immunized over 11,000 students.
Wow.
But still, we think it did affect our enrollment. Hopefully, we will see a little bump when classes start March, the, what, the classes start in March, eight-week classes.
The 19th.
Right after spring break.
The 19th.
The 19th, when the second eight weeks start. They would have had, those who didn't get their immunizations would have had time to get those. Dr. Kegler also worked with the main, the larger drugstore chains and they were, they were also very helpful to our students. And I believe they all agreed to give the shot for no copay, if they had insurance. So we got quite a bit of help with it, but we think it still affected our enrollment. And finally, I will give you just a few of the accolades. This is always great reading for you. I know you read everything in this book. I know you do. But I just want to highlight a few things, starting with Northeast Campus. Five Northeast Campus music students attended the Texas Music Educators Convention. They performed with the two-year all-state college choir at that convention. And of course, Larry said, needless to say, he's very proud of those students and so are we. Martha Gardner and Patricia Richards spent New Year's Eve weekend in Havana, Cuba, photographing the city and environs. An exhibit is planned in Dallas as well as on the Northeast Campus as a part of the April International Festival. I always like to mention things like this because I'm always very, very pleased about the many, many, many different kinds of things that our great faculty does on a regular basis. And then our biology faculty members, Charlene Cold and Jean Maynes, Marius Pfeiffer and George Aliaga.
Aliaga.
Aliaga. And VP Garrett Smith received the National Science Foundation grant to go to Irvine, California, they're just back, I guess, from that trip, to participate in the workshop on bringing research-based instruction into freshman labs. They joined other community college faculty throughout the country to develop research-based labs for community college students. And I don't know anything about this one in particular, except I do know that generally, these research-based labs in community colleges are designed to get more students interested in STEM areas. And so if you can teach them how to do a little research while they're in community college, some of them will get the bug and they'll go on to do more of that. On our Northwest Campus, the employees collected school supplies, items for incentive rewards, and playground equipment for their adopted elementary school, which is W.J. Turner. They delivered the gifts on pajama day at the school. I don't know what pajama day is, Alva, what is that? You wear your pajamas to school? Just like it says, huh? Okay. The donations, I bet the kids really like that one. The donations included a bicycle for the fifth grade student who maintains perfect attendance and an 81% average in his or her academic classes. And the bike will be awarded at the end of this school year. Also, the Northwest Campus provided gifts for more than 250 children at the ACH, what is that?
All Church Home.
All Church Home. Child and Family Services through the Student Development Services December Spotlight on Service Giving Project, the Spotlight on Service Giving Project, sponsored by the Northwest Campus Student Activities Group. And then finally, the Northwest Campus hosted the TCC Northwest University Interscholastic League Academic Meet in January of 2012 with 360 students from 12 high schools attending. And that was another great event for Northwest Campus. On our South Campus, students in the film appreciation courses produced two short films and submitted to the Neuro Film Festival to support brain research. Each film spotlights a South Campus student who experiences daily complications of a brain injury or disorder. And Dr. Gallagher will be glad to send you the link to vote thumbs up for the film. Why didn't she just send it to us? Tell her we'd love to have it. I'm sorry? Make sure she gets, we get it. Earlene Green continues to expand her service learning project in conjunction with empty bowls so that more of our students can experience the satisfaction of helping meet the needs of homeless members of our community. Through the project, students expand their critical thinking skills and develop an appreciation for teamwork. There are currently 60 students enrolled in her classes and they are already creating bowls for donations to the Tarrant Area Food Bank. That's another example of the, many of the wonderful things that our students do. On Trinity River Campus, they have a gloves project that they, and they collect all kinds of really, really great gloves. And finally, on the South Campus, the Oil and Gas Production Program. 14 of the 23 students from the first cohort have already received job offers. As of January 30, 2012, and 15, the 15th student will interview on February 1st. I don't know if you've heard how that student came out. But two students from the second cohort have already received job offers prior to graduation, while an additional 13 students have received interviews prior to job graduation. That's the Oil and Gas Production Program. Is that a credit program, Peter? It's not credit. Troy, where are you?
Right here.
Okay, stand up for just a minute. How many hours are involved or how many weeks?
Nine.
Nine weeks. Eight to five. See, that's another example of what I'm talking about and look at all the good we're doing. But we really don't count those in our success numbers and we must find a way to do that. Troy?
Right now, it is, I was continuing to say, but they've already been talked about.
Okay, thank you. Keep up the great work. On our Southeast Campus, the VITA Program, you heard about that one a few months ago. That's the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program that began on January 28th. A project that is run by the Accounting Department as a student capstone project. That means that the students have to do that right before they graduate. Last year, the Southeast Campus site was the only site with 100% accuracy on all returns. 20 Southeast Campus students have completed certification. And this gives me an opportunity to tell you that, it's in my report, I know, I attended a breakfast that was called by the United Way Leadership Team. And they were asking all of the public entities that can help with the Financial Sustainability Program, that's one of United Way's big reaches for this year, to help. And they were asking if Tarrant County College could help them with more campuses participating in the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program because they're trying to blanket the county. They told us that last year, as a result of this program, they brought in, I believe, something like $22 million into Tarrant County through earned income credit refunds that people didn't know they could get because they went through these programs. And, and that's money that goes into the families' pockets and of course, it's spent in Tarrant County and it just really helps. So I under- So I understand that we were starting a program on South this year, and Trinity. So we, we have three now. So Dr. LeBlanc and Dr. Darly, if you'll talk to your accounting departments to see if they have an interest in getting something going for the next cycle, that would be very good. Also, on the Southeast Campus, Gaila Curley, instructor of mathematics and chair of the Department of Math, now serves as a committee chairperson of the Coordinating Board Development Mass Student Success Strategies Leadership Team. And we know that that's a very important appointment for, for Tarrant County College and for all of the community colleges. And finally, on Southeast, Ivan Minho, who is assistant professor of Spanish, is working with the Museum of Cultures to produce a DVD about the Amazon region and tribal culture. And the project targets various schools in Dallas and Tarrant Counties. On our Trinity River Campus, John Hyzer has been invited to, to speak at a symposium in China, May eighteenth through twentieth. Is that Zian University in China has just started a respiratory care program. Last year, will be graduating their first group of students this summer. John has also been recognized with the NiSOT Award for Teaching Excellence. And on January twenty-eighth, Tarrant, Trinity River student Santiago Hernandez and his hybrid course partner from Northeast Campus, his hybrid partner, that's interesting, his hybrid course partner, okay, from TCC Northeast, won first place, this is a really good one, won first place at the West Texas A. and M. Tarrant County College Northeast Texas Two-Step Swing Tournament. The best part about that, they defeated TCU in the final round to finish at the top of the tournament. And it was Santiago's first career tournament in a parliamentary debate. Now, is that an accolade for Tarrant County College? Absolutely. And, and finally, on Trinity River Campus, you'll recall, we started a library technology program this fall semester. This is the second semester for that program, and we have fifty-one students enrolled in three classes, a great beginning. Carol Everhart, Director of Library Services, is the brainchild behind that program, another one of those technical programs that we're calling a gateway to a better opportunity. And finally, it's not quite finally, in continuing education, we were awarded a state leadership grant, Career Pathways to Student Success. The grant came from the Higher Education Coordinating Board, and one goal of the grant is to partner with Texas Tech University to align the legislatively mandated college and career readiness standards to the Texas essential knowledge and skills in high school career and technology education. We are very excited about the work that we are going to be doing with the high schools and, and coming to, helping them understand where their students need help, so that when they come to us, they'll be in a better place. And we're looking forward to those partnerships working together. It's also very good to have the universities, so we're, the state is trying to get everybody talking to each other, and, so this is very good for us. In our Workforce Services Department, we implemented the Spanish GED course at Trinity River, as well as the TCC Opportunity Center. And we expanded that Spanish GED to South Campus as well. And currently, we are offering two sections at South, four at the TCC Opportunity Center, and three sections at Trinity River. So we are trying really diligently to take care of the needs of our community, and so there are some great needs out there. There's much more that I could tell you, but if I did, you wouldn't have anything to read later tonight, so I will stop it at that. Mr. Greenhill, that ends-
Thank you very much.
-my report.
All right. And the, the final thing, on the second to the last, penultimate thing on our agenda, is the Leadership and Governance Panel that Kristen and Louise and I attended made a presentation. And thank you all for letting us participate in that. We, it was exciting, a lot of, as Irma could tell you, there were a lot of younger persons chosen to be in the leadership team this, this time. I really enjoyed it. We, we made a presentation about the, the governance process, but thank you all for letting us be a part of it. Did either of you all have, either one of you all have a comment on it?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you. And the final thing is for me to announce, we're going to go into a closed meeting, and that there is no action to be taken afterwards, so that y'all can go home. But I'm going to repeat some things I have to repeat. We're going to go into closed meeting pursuant to 551-072, Texas Government Code. The Real Property Discussion will address the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate. Our second thing is pursuant to Section 551-074 of Texas Government Code. The deliberation will include a discussion on the evaluation instrument. Yes, ma'am? Oh, to adopt it? Oh, okay, we might have to adopt something, but they don't have to be here to adopt an instrument. Okay.
They can stay if they want to.
They can stay if they want to. Okay, I'm sorry, we have to. The instrument of the chancellor, we're going to discuss the self-evaluation document that we'll use this year. Texas Government Code for the purposes of private consultation with the board's attorney on subject of matters authorized by law. And that's it. Thank you all for being here, and we'll come back out to announce some action perhaps, but it will be about the evaluation instrument. Thank you all. Good job.
Thank you. A very nice, good meeting, Leslie.
Good meeting. Great meeting.
Good evening.